Well, hello, everybody. Welcome to our afternoon work session. I'll go ahead and call us to order. Clerk, will you call the role?
Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Annie Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Come on up, Eric. Good to see you. We've got a whole bunch of items on interim budget changes, quite a few of which are pretty exciting, from the Warm Springs, I'll call it, community center to funds for State and Arthur Homes and then additional rental assistance. So thanks for walking us through those.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have fourteen interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon, all but three of which are budget or revenue neutral. The first three are for the airport. They, all three of these are to cover increase in construction costs or for utility relocations. Those three projects are the DICE Apron Project, the General Aviation Hangar Taxilane Project, and Taxiway W. The offsets for those three projects are the Taxilane S Extension Project, the General Aviation Hangar Roadway Project, and the SkyWest Apron Project, all three of which projects have savings. The fourth item is for two distinct Arts and History Department-related projects funded with CCDC resources. The first one is art, public art at West Grove Street. The public art would be a component of the overall project to bring new public space downtown, celebrating the history of the Old Boise neighborhood. The second one, Old Boise Blocks Public Art, actually has two distinct components. The first is for the design and fabrication of public artwork that would serve as a barrier between the water wheel and the sidewalk at CW Moore Park. The second being the fabrication of a concrete stamp that would provide a unifying identity for the Old Boise blocks. Again, both of those funded with CCDC resources. The fifth item is a budget-neutral appropriation increase in the mayor's office funded through a reduction of the City Council's strategic planning contingency as a contribution for the 2023 Fourth of July Parade. There would be an additional $10,000 in-kind donation or contribution from the mayor's office for items such as police services and parking included as part of that item as well. The sixth item would be for the installation of a burn prop at the Fire Training Center. This gas-fired prop at the cost of a quarter of a million dollars would be funded through a donation from the National Park Service. And when the Fire Training Center Tower was constructed, it was constructed to accommodate this eventual prop. So we have that element. Next item is the purchase of SCBA equipment funded through a grant from FEMA. The current SCBA equipment has reached the end of its useful life. This grant would be, again, supported through FEMA resources. Boise is coordinating the purchase of this and the overall grant process on behalf of other local fire districts, including Eagle, Middleton, Knackford, and Whitney. The eighth item is for an associated piece of equipment along with the SCBAs, which is a compressor. That piece of equipment would be funded via a donation from the National Park Service. The next item is an increase to our risk management fund to support higher-than-anticipated insurance costs for various risk services at the city. It would be funded from a fund balance within the risk management fund. Tenth item is a series of investments at the Downtown Library, all three funded from the Project Portfolio Fund established as part of the FY23 adopted budget. The first element would be a $600,000 investment for renovations on the first floor, covering a remodeling of the entrance, circulation desk, and expansion of the youth services area. Second element is $30,000 for a space study at the main library to maximize public space usage there. And the third item would be for fourth-floor renovations, basically converting a workroom that's been used for storage for additional staff space. Item number eleven is for planning and design work associated with the new city facility at Warm Springs Golf Course. This $1 million investment in the planning and design work would be funded through a donation that the city had received. Any remaining costs associated with this project are anticipated to be built into the FY24 proposed budget. The twelfth item is for a mapping project, a Goatheads Mapping Project in the Boise foothills for the development of a map of Goathead Hotspots to advance eradication efforts. That project would be funded through the Open Space and Clean Water Levy Fund. The thirteenth item is an investment for the State and Arthur Affordable Housing Project. That investment would have two components, 1.2 million loan of federal home funds that would be repaid to the city by HUD at a later date, and a $1 million contribution of city funds from the HCD Housing Investment Program. The final item would be an increase for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. That investment would be funded, the city investment would be reimbursed by a contribution from the Department of Treasury to extend that program. 1.4 million would go directly to Emergency Rental Assistance with the remaining 6.7 million available for future construction rehabilitation or housing affordability preservation projects. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions, and we have representatives available for the majority of these projects here as well.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. That was a really well summarized report. I just had a quick question with respect to the library project, in particular, the notation that the $600,000 allocation would, is not necessarily aligned with the American Disabilities Act and the the additional maintenance repairs. I was just curious if you could speak to or be planning to align those to ensure that there's access and part of that project, especially on the American Disabilities Act is my primary issue.
Mayor, council member, we have current projects going for EDA right now and major repair and maintenance, and so this project just kind of fits in with nice timing. So we are taking care of all of that through separate projects.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of comments. One, these are, there's fourteen items here, so there's a lot of changes. But they're all super exciting, and I think a lot of them speak to the city's great partnerships that we have across the board, whether it's fire, national parks, CCDC and Arts and History, council member Willetts' efforts with the Fourth of July Parade, Boise State University, and the Clean Water and Open Space Advisory Committee with the Goatheads, and all the stuff that our housing, our housing staff is working with, with the Housing Authority and Plan Development, Idaho Housing and Finance Association and HUD. There's just so many ways where we're working together with different departments to make a lot of these things happen, and it's really cool to see all that collaboration. One, I think, special note, the one that's related to puncture vine eradication. I have nothing to do with this whatsoever. But during the previous administration, I remember going to Mayor Beeter at the time and talking about Go Ahead Fest, and he asked if it was really going to be possible to get rid of goat heads in the Treasure Valley, and I told him, like, yes, it's absolutely possible. And then, of course, our city ecologist Martha Brabek said, yeah, I don't know that it's going to be that possible. But this is a really cool project because it's a PhD project at Boise State University where they're really taking a scientific method to figuring out where is puncture vine or goat head spreading from, and how can we eradicate it from those areas to keep it from spreading further? And so it's a much more scientific approach than I ever would have envisioned to help them get rid of these things. But it's just a really cool way that we can partner with Boise State, some of their best and brightest students, and of course, Martha Brabek at the City of Boise, to figure out how we can make a great stab at getting rid of these things. And then the second thing was just a big compliment to council member Willetts. I know that she put a lot of effort to get this into the interim budget change, and I think it's really exciting to have this back in Boise. It's a good job.
So I just got to ask, so if these students are successful at getting rid of puncture vine, will BBP still have the festival?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. We just won't have to go pick them and cut our hands up and count them. All right.
Instead of the Goathead Fest, it will be a celebration of life for goat heads.
We take a motion to...
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the interim budget changes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to echo council member Hallie Burton's comments. There's a lot here. Thank you, Eric. I know you're busy preparing the upcoming budget. Obviously, I'm very excited about the opportunity that we have to celebrate the Fourth of July. I want to compliment Todd Christensen, who's here from CAPED Credit Union, who's helping us spearhead this. We have a remarkable opportunity as a community to come together and celebrate the founding of our country, and the theme of this year is founding fathers and founding mothers, which I very much appreciate. As a side note, if you haven't read Cookie Roberts' book on founding mothers, it is a must-read. It's excellent. And also, we're going to be celebrating the 250th anniversary celebration of our country coming up in a few years. So this is just getting us on the track to have Boise be on the map for that sort of celebration, and I appreciate the mayor's office for her contribution and also for the city council. Positive vote pending to get us off the ground. It's been absent for a couple of years, and we're going to have a great, great parade with a lot of community involvement. So thank you.
Yeah, and on that, just before we vote, I want to thank you too for working on it and to CAPED. I also want to thank the family that for years put this on. It's, I think we've discovered, especially as we now have a title sponsor that's hired folks to help make this happen, how how much work it was for the family that made our Fourth of July Parade happen for so many years. And it made sense that they needed to take a break, and it's lovely that the community came together to bring this back, and I look forward to pancakes after and all the other events around it. But just want to give a nod to the family that for so many years organized that parade on their own, and those of us that are in the middle of special events permits and all those other things really know how much work went into it and the effort that they made. And so thank you for all the work that you've done and to the title sponsor CAPED for bringing us all together around it. And thanks to all the staff that's here today. The council president pro tem's right. All of these budget changes are really a result of really important partnerships which bring great results and work onto the ground in our community for Boise. So appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, there is one more that I didn't mention, and that's the incredible donor who's making the Warm Springs Golf Course the space there possible. So a big thank you to them as well and to our Parks and Rec team who helped put that together.
Nash?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Woodings?
Yes.
Agent?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Annie Keith?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, Eric. And Chloe, welcome. Chloe's going to walk through an update on the grants that we are providing to small businesses in our community.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I am Chloe Ross, Strategic Initiatives Manager in the Mayor's Office, and I am here to provide a wrap-up, which will include an overview of the ARPA Small Business Grant Program. I'm going to review details of the program, set a little context, and then talk about our vetting as well as the amendment that we have on the consent agenda at 6:00 PM to give United Way a little bit more money to make this happen. As a reminder, this is one of the five ARPA Projects Council earmarked in 2021 that would go directly into the community to address pandemic-related impacts. $2 million was set aside to administer $4,000 mini-grants to small businesses in our community. We have funding for about 500 small businesses, and we've partnered with the United Way of Treasure Valley to administer the funds. The grant program was designed to target especially small businesses in our community who were adversely impacted by the pandemic and who may not have been able to access pandemic-related relief otherwise. Recipients don't have any obligation to pay the money back or to report on purchases made with those funds. This is a no strings attached grant meant to provide relief to those businesses in our community who may have fallen through the cracks. The application was open November 17, 22, to January 31, 2023. We reached out to over 2,100 businesses in the community to advertise this opportunity, and then we provided translation services in Spanish, Swahili, and Arabic to make sure that this was truly accessible to as many businesses and business owners as possible. Once the application was closed earlier this year, a small but mighty team of city staff reviewed and vetted each application. And once that review process was over, 487 businesses have been approved to receive a $4,000 grant in this month. To give you a sense of what types of businesses, these businesses range from auto mechanics to hair stylists and nail techs, massage therapists, counselors, lawn and repair maintenance companies, small restaurants, and there are even some musicians in the group. In order to ensure that we were really targeting the businesses that we intended to, the applicants had to meet all of the criteria listed on this slide, and all of the applications were based on self-attestation. The first four are pretty self-explanatory, but I would like to comment on the qualified industry codes and the negative economic impact. Because we wanted to target specific businesses who we know fared poorly during the pandemic, applicants were asked to select an industry from the selection of NICS codes, and NICS stands for North American Industry Classification System, which is just a set of codes that is used by the federal government to essentially collect and analyze information. These were, the NICS codes that we selected fell into categories that were related to retail, building, maintenance, and repair, accommodation, food services, arts, entertainment, and recreation, auto repair, and hair and nail services. Additionally, in order to be eligible, applicants had to have experienced negative economic impact, and to show this, they could either identify that their business lives in a qualified census tract or that they had experienced negative economic impact, which we would consider periods of closure, trouble covering payroll or operating costs, or just a general inability to weather financial hardship. And at any time, we reserve the right to reach out and collect documentation that would prove negative economic impact. In total, 821 unique applications were submitted through this application process, and 566 of those were eligible to move on to the vetting in that vetting process. These 566 businesses were vetted by a team of code enforcement officers from Department of Finance and Administration, a small group of mayor's office staff, and then the city's GIS team also helped in developing out the map and confirming business addresses and qualified census tract location. Businesses who met the criteria that is listed, with the exception of an active filing with the Secretary of State, were given the opportunity to register or update their their application or their filing in order to ensure that we were giving as many people the opportunity as possible. And again, at any time, we reserve the right to request documentation or proof of eligibility criteria. As a result of the vetting process that we took, an additional 72 applications were pulled from the list for a range of reasons. Throughout the entire vetting process, we identified a total of 33 people who invented a fake business or applied on behalf of a real business without the knowledge of the business owner. And in those instances, the business owner was contacted to verify the identity, and upon authorization or not authorization, the business owner was offered the grant as long as the business was verified as eligible. And then what we did was take that list of 33 and share that with the police department for further investigation. In addition to the vetting process that I just outlined, a random sample was conducted of 10% of the businesses who were not located in the QCT but had said they experienced negative economic impact. These 35 applicants were asked to provide additional tax and business documentation that was then reviewed by a third party to ensure the accuracy of the self-attestation. The result of the review found that 4% of the applicants had falsely self-attested to having negatively experienced a negative economic impact. So that looked like of those 35 businesses, 23 were able to provide proof of financial impact, acceptable proof. Three were unable to provide sufficient documentation. One provided false documentation, and eight were non-responsive. Those 12 were then taken off of the list of eligible applications. And I share this because it is worth noting that this 4% rate of self, of false self-attestation is significantly lower than the 10% rate that is accepted by the US Treasury Department as they're auditing other pandemic-related relief efforts. And I think shows the worthwhile effort of a thorough vetting process that staff underwent. In closing, I would like to highlight to council then that we have a request for an amendment to the United Way agreement on the consent agenda tonight. The number of checkstaff originally budgeted for was 482, but an additional five have been deemed eligible, and there are seven more that we're hoping will contact us by the end of the month. And so based on that additional 12, businesses were requesting an amendment to increase the contract by $48,000 so that we can run every eligible application that applied. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Well, I want to say first, thank you to you and the team for the work that went into this. I mean, this was our opportunity to give funds back to businesses that struggled during the pandemic, that didn't receive funds from other sources, and it was something that was important to you, that we go back to those that didn't qualify for, or didn't, or we'd run out of funds to support businesses that had tried to earlier in the pandemic. And our goal with this was really to support small businesses as often and as much as we could. And I also appreciate that you brought up the number of businesses that you found that hadn't done the application correctly, or they'd falsely attested to the impact, because it was important to us also to demonstrate that we had the processes in place to make sure that those that were tired, played by the rules, and were eligible for these funds could receive them to help their businesses, but on the other side, that we weren't giving them to businesses that shouldn't receive them. And there was some frustration in the time that it took to be so thorough, but it was important to be thorough to make sure that we weren't enabling fraud in this case, but truly helping businesses that deserved it and needed it. So I appreciate that element, too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I have a question about the language access piece. You had mentioned Spanish, Swahili, and
Arabic.
Arabic. Do we keep track of businesses in Boise and what the first language of their owners is? I'm just super curious about that.
Mayor and council president Woodings, that is a good question, and I don't believe that we have a certain list of number of who are certain, speaking certain languages, but that list was selected based on who our targeted industries were, and I think kind of a general sense of who owned those businesses and what could be the broadest reach.
Thank you. That's super interesting. It would be, like, as we're licensing businesses, it would be interesting to have that as a question to capture those demographics so that we can make sure that what we think is actually true as we're going about things like this in the future. So I really appreciate that. And great job. This was something that came up really early in the pandemic as very small businesses were struggling a lot, and there wasn't a lot of help out there for them. So I'm glad that we were finally able to get some assistance. So better late than never, right?
Madam Mayor, yeah, I would just echo your words personally. It's not easy to apply for grants, even in the nonprofit sector. When you're trained how to do it, it's not easy to do, and these are small businesses who don't do this on a regular basis, going through a time of crisis, trying to figure out ways to make ends meet. And I just really appreciate all the extra effort that went into it from the staff, from the folks at United Way, to really make sure that we were doing everything we could to help folks out as much as we can. And the hands-off, no strings attached approach. We know that these businesses struggled, and now we want to give them whatever resource we can for them to get back on their feet, do the best that they can. So again, I just appreciate the flexibility, the extra work that went into it. I know that we didn't have to, and I know that there was some pressure from council and the mayor's office to make sure that we were doing everything that we could, and I appreciate you all delivering on that.
Mayor and council pro tem Hallie Burton, thank you. And I think I didn't mention, but would like to emphasize that the application was designed to be as easy as possible to fill out, as kind of low, the hoops to jump through were as few as possible to submit the application.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And now we have Sarah Gordon from HR, the Director of HR, talk with us about recruitment vacancy updates, but also some strategies around them.
All right, thank you. So I am Sarah Gordon, HR Director, and it was about a year ago that I came to you and said I asked for some help. We had our HR department, the city was growing, and we couldn't keep up with demand. So I asked for some help with some security coverage. We've gotten that now for the libraries. That feels really great. We asked for business partners. We now have those stood up and people in place, and they are serving as the first point of contact for our departments and having a lot of success. And I'm getting a lot of really good feedback from directors saying they feel much better support. And then the other thing that we asked for was some help with the talent acquisition team, to stand up a team that could really address how do we get the best, brightest employees as quickly as we can. So I'm happy to report, as of yesterday, HR is fully staffed for the first time since I started two and some years ago. So we're thrilled about that. But I just want to talk to you about a number of things. Let me see, let me start here. Oh, there. Okay, so I'm going to run through just some national and state trends so you all can see what is the status of this. We know after the pandemic, finding employees has gotten really hard. So I want to just get us up to speed on current state. I want to talk some more about city of Boise data specifically, and then some of the strategies that we've got in place and are working on. So national trends, we'll make this as simple as possible, but essentially, the top line is hires. The bottom line is separations. When you have more hires than separations, you're in a tough spot, right? There are fewer people available to come and work for you. So you can see nationally, go back to February of '21, we're about there. It went up, and then it's come back down, but we're still in a tough spot. So to say this has resolved itself just isn't the case. Everybody is still vying for the same employees. Everybody is still kind of vying for the same employees. And then this one just shows that we track with the US. So these are job openings as a percent of employment. The thing to note here is that the blue line is the US and then the red dotted line is Idaho. We tend to have a bit harder time. We're a growing city. We need more people and that it we we track the trend, but it's just a little even tougher than some of the other places in the country.
Well, and it's interesting just to jump in, like I was on a compass call today. And they referenced the kind of year-end money that's still available in HR because of their vacancies and just see so many
Yeah.
cities kind of nodding as we're talking about the compass, that happening at Compass or elsewhere.
Yeah, this is not resolved itself. So we're all still kind of in the same, the same spot. And then I want to talk specifically about Idaho. This is a super busy chart, but it's what I used even last year to show you. The the blue, dark blue is the Idaho unemployed. You can see with COVID, the spike in terms of people unemployed. And then it kind of is leveled out. The light blue are available postings and then the dotted is the ratio of job postings to unemployed. The bottom line of this is that there are one and a half jobs per available person. So we have more jobs than we have people. It's gotten a whole lot better than it was last year, but it's still, we're out of whack. So we are vying for the same folks with everybody else in Idaho as well. Idaho's unemployment most recently looks like it was about two point six percent. The western region, so take Colorado, go north and south and then left west, that it's about four point three. So Idaho is really, really super tight. And we're growing. So it's just, it continues to be a tough spot. So it it essentially tells us, thank you for letting us have a talent acquisition team because we darn well need it. And this I just wanted to show you so you know kind of the situation we're in. So just a reminder, when we talk about our employees, what's the size of the workforce? I'm not going to read through each of those, but this is the the volume of of folks we need to just keep keep to be functional. And you'll see there's six hundred and forty annual average temp and seasonal employees. We are hot and heavy right now hiring lifeguards, play camps, all that kind of stuff. So that's going on right now. So there is some fluctuation in the workforce based on that. I also want to let you know sort of the update on vacancies. So vacancies still hover around two hundred. That's higher than we want certainly. But let me talk about that a little bit. With public safety, that can be cyclical. So we might have some folks ready to be in an academy. They just haven't done it yet. So as soon as the academy runs through, then those vacancies drop because we're able to fill those. There's also the case that some vacancies are there, but we're just not quite ready to hire. The organization isn't ready, but they know they're going to need some folks to do some things coming forward. And I'll talk about that in just a minute. But the vacancy right now is hovering right around ten percent. It's better than it's been, but it's still higher than we want. Okay. And this is the one that I care a whole lot about. And let me explain it. On the right, you'll see applications to requisition. So back in twenty nineteen, we would get close to forty applications per opening. We're now tracking at fifteen. That's the part that makes me nervous, right? Because we need, we want the best people and we want them here quickly. As that reduces, it just makes it harder to get the very best folks. So that's why, again, it reinforces our need to really be paying attention, to be sourcing well and to turn that number around. So that fifteen point three is is what I keep my eye on and we got to move in the other direction.
Madam Mayor, a question about this slide. Do we have any departments where like this isn't tracking the same, where like there still are tons of people are applying? Or is this sort of across the board?
I think every director is running into this. Yeah. There's some that it feels like it's gotten better. The fact HR is fully staffed feels really good. So it's possible, but it to say, oh, yeah, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. It's still, it's still pretty rough.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I want to now talk, this is human resources. So I want to talk about the people that we were able to bring in. These are our recruiters. So we have Amanda, who's been with the city, and this was a promotion for her. We have Manju, who's relatively new to the city, but has a whole lot of experience. And some of you might have already worked with her in recruitment. And then we have Sam, who's got previous experience and then worked with the National Guard. So these are the recruiters who do everything from the minute a requisition comes up through having someone get an offer letter. And they are, they have a lot of energy. It's a, it's a rare breed who can do recruitment and they're a really awesome team. And Meghan McJunkin is the Senior Manager, if you've worked with Meghan. And these are our coordinators. So the minute that the offer letter goes out until they're onboarded, these are the lovely folks that help us do that. The first Sarah, we joke there are four Sarahs in HR. If you threw a rock, you'd hit one. But this Sarah is dedicated to public safety. Sarah C. has been with the organization for eight years, supporting the recruitment we used to do and then some of the onboarding. And then Mary Ellen, she's been with HR as a as a function for a long time. So these are the coordinators that do the administration to get people ready and onboarded as quickly as possible. So by investing in talent acquisition team, like I mentioned earlier, we've got a dedicated team now. This is what they do for a living. It's a lot of work, but it is the only thing they do. They're not distracted by a whole bunch of other things they used to have to add to the job. So they do everything from sourcing through onboarding, going and finding people where they are. It used to be back when we had thirty-nine applicants per job, you could just say, hey, we got another one. Benefits are great. Come on over. And we get a whole bunch of applicants. That's just not the way. So we have to now go actively look for folks. We also are partnering differently and better with the hiring managers. So by new service levels, that means that we go in and we do an intake for every new open position. What are you looking for? What's the expectation? What's the skill set? So our expert recruiters can go look for that. And then also, we're now writing offer letters as an example. So they're consistent, they're clear, they're accurate, all those kinds of things. So there's a different service level with our hiring managers and that's been well received. The other thing is with the applicant experience, how can we make onboarding better? How can we make it quicker and as easy as possible? One of the things we're excited about that we're doing is we are now doing background checks by outsourcing instead of, instead of doing them ourselves. Sorry, I have to take a deep breath. I'm talking too fast. Anyway, so we're outsourcing background checks to make that quicker, easier and keep our staff focused where they need to focus. Okay, let me talk about some of the
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm going to allow the director to take a breath.
Thank you. Sorry, I got so excited. I got going too fast.
You're good. You're good. I do have a question, but keep breathing. I want to make sure that I understand, prior to the consolidation, were offer letters being done at the department level and now they're being done within your shop?
Yeah, yeah. So we would agree on compensation. Then they'd go write them. Sometimes they were what we thought they'd be. Sometimes they weren't. So this is just bringing more consistency to the process and taking a load off. And we had people in departments who weren't HR people that were trying their best to serve as an HR person because that's all we had.
Yeah, no, I think it's really smart. I mean, it really should come from HR. And I mean, all of the things that you're talking about are best practices. So thank you.
Yeah, no, you bet. Okay, thank you. I've got my breath now. So here are some of the community partnerships we've got going. And we are always welcome to more if you know some that we should be talking to. We're happy to do that. We have Neighbors United and International Rescue Committee. And we're starting to just build some potential strategies on how we might work with them. We have the folks through Mission Forty-Three Hire Heroes are one of our business partners. Dietrich Morgan came from them. That's been a phenomenal partnership. They're very receptive and responsive and we're getting great talent from that group and partnering with them. We've got BSU internships, I think in the mayor's office or some of the mayor's initiatives have some of those interns as well as in the department. So we've been able to partner with BSU in that way. Then we've been talking to CWI around trades and mechanical positions and how can we build that pipeline? Public Works and Airport have a whole lot of positions that need to be filled that tie to these kinds of skill sets. So how do we bring those folks in? And the Idaho Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired, we're doing some work to bring some folks in and see how that works. There's some youth volunteer training going on just to get people some skill sets so that they can come in and help out. And then we're also doing better sourcing and advertising. So LinkedIn, many of us are on LinkedIn. They have really great recruiter tools. So we didn't just say, oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna post some stuff every now and then. We're actually subscribing to their recruiter tools so that we can get more access and more visibility there. We use Indeed. We do job boosts over the weekends for hard-to-fill jobs when people tend to be looking for jobs. That's a good time to have it up for them. And then just going to local job fairs, the team has the the go kits and they're out and about regularly to get get connected to folks directly. It's also been nice because the departments have been partnering with us and bringing their staff who knows the jobs. We aren't experts in, you know, HVAC and that kind of thing, but they are. So they can come talk to their folks. Okay, I just have a couple more slides and this gets to the good news, which were, whoops. Somehow that got backwards. I don't know what the, oh, I'll put it here. It's funny in my slide deck. One other thing I just want to touch on is with two hundred vacancies, we can't just keep saying, oh, yeah, we have two hundred vacancies. What we want to do is say of these, when do you need them? So let's put them on a timeline and say, we know we need to hire these fifteen this month, the next twenty, the next month, so that we know when we are going at it and make sure those are accurate vacancies. And then we can plan and start sourcing. So if we know in three months, we have a whole bunch of mechanical positions coming in, how do we prepare the pipeline? So when that happens, we have those resources. So just better, better planning and getting organized with the department so we can meet the need. Okay, that's what I thought it was done. Okay. So the orange line are the number of vacant positions and the blue are the positions being filled. The good news is they're starting to come together. That's exactly what we want to see. We are anticipating with this new team that we can move faster now that they are in place. We got our processes pretty well defined. The way we do business is established now. And so we could just move a little faster. So this, since January, is making us feel pretty good. We know there's work to do, but we're at least heading in the right direction. And then the last one I'll leave you with is just, we now have actually fifty-eight, I looked today, jobs open. That's more than we typically do. It used to be in the forties. We now have capacity to advertise more jobs, to go for more jobs and to get them out there invisible to people who might be looking for one. So the news is good. It's just we're going to have to keep after it and be pretty aggressive in what we're doing.
Do these openings include all the kind of summer temp or is that different?
Yeah, no, it's all, it's all the stuff. Yeah.
So then normally at this time in May, at the beginning of summer, do we see the number of jobs we have open? Go up and then it levels out again?
Yeah, the hope though is that we can keep it up, right? So if we know we've got that many vacancies, how do we plan ahead so we can keep bringing them in sooner? Not kind of waiting and like, oh, now I might be ready. You might be ready. How can we be much more proactive? The other thing now that we have the business partners in place, it's a great partnership because they now know, the library person knows what the library needs are. So we can talk to them about it and see what we can be doing to be ready for when when their needs arise. So it just is a much tighter, easier way to work now that we've got the resources we need to do it. So again, thank you for last year and getting us set up well for now. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just on your last slide, I noticed it's fifty-five job postings. But to the mayor's question about seasonal employees, I presume based on the presentation we had earlier, especially from Parks and Rec, that that may not be indicative of the number of actual jobs available. I presume one posting for a seasonal employee might lead to five or eight, I believe. As Zomack mentioned, that they need to open up a new site for our children.
That's exactly right. So there it might post as lifeguard, but there might be twenty lifeguards available if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Sarah, I just want to commend you on potentially being the only entity in the entire city of Boise who's fully staffed right now. That is no small feat. And talking to everyone, I know they're just like, it's so hard to hire. So it's really great. And plus, we recently got to work with Manju. And she's fabulous. Like, it's so great working with a recruiter who really knows their stuff and can give great advice and really provide good guidance when you're recruiting for a really important position. So I appreciate all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll just keep hiring
Yeah.
onward.
Yeah, and I, this time next year, the story should be even better. I mean, honestly, that's the goal is we just have to keep after these numbers and we have the data to show how we're doing.
Yeah, the trend lines are looking good. I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I know that we've been doing a lot of different tabling activities, different job fairs and stuff like that. I'm kind of curious if we can tell when people apply or when they actually get a job, if we can tell where they're coming from and like which areas are more effective than those or if they are effective.
That's, that's a really good question. And I can't tell you that on the application, it necessarily says that, but that's something that we can certainly look into. As we're doing the onboarding, there's no reason we can't be asking those questions and just make sure we know that. Yeah. Great.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got Tim Keen, Director of Planning, to provide an update on our pathways plan. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, I'll go through quickly an update on efforts around pathways in the city. Joining me this evening are Jessica Zilag, who leads the planning team within Planning and Development Services, and Tessa Gregor, who leads the Mobility and Public Spaces team. She's new to the city. And also Karen Gallagher, who's here that you know and has worked for the city for quite some time on all issues related to transportation. I'll announce if it, if you don't know, that Karen will be retiring soon. So she'll be leaving the city. Congratulations, Karen. In a couple of months. And they're here to help me with this and to answer questions as needed. And these are the things I'll go through with you this evening. Just quickly, the background on the pathways plan and the idea of pathways in the city. The progress that's being made, how the pathways program factors into the planning department's work and our collaboration with parks and other agencies related to implementation of pathways. The idea of the network within the city and how best to implement it, and then a few next steps. First of all, regarding the background on pathways, the pathways plan was adopted by the city just over a year ago in January of twenty twenty-two. It does envision a network of pathways throughout the city that that connect us, connect neighborhoods, connect people to parks, connect people to places they need to be, supports the city's goals and priorities around mobility and equity, climate. It's a fundamental part of how you all see the city growing. We recognize that. And and this is something of great urgency for the city because we are growing and it's important that we grow around more and more people having access to pathways throughout the city and therefore having options for how they get around and have better access to the things that they need. It is the case, as you know, that a little more than seventy-five percent of residents of the city live within a ten-minute walk of existing or planned pathways that are part of that plan that was adopted by City Council in January of twenty twenty-two. Some things that have gone on related to implementation of pathways, that includes funding for some pathway projects of a real potential and a place where we're excited to continue the work the city's already started is is on the Garden Street Cassia effort, which is exciting for many reasons. The city's been working on the the canal there that would connect the park with the neighborhood south of there for a number of years and has gotten funding for that through federal grant program with the assistance of Compass. And so that's wonderful, but it's also just part of a bigger network on the bench. You know, the ACHD has a a plan to, and they're starting their execution of improvements to Garden Street, which of course connects you to ultimately with this improvement to the canal, to the park, to Cassia Park, but then south all the way to the the Green Belt. It's exemplifies a lot of what the pathways plan is about. And there's potential beyond the park going north to continue that extension and connect many things on the neck. So that's on the on the bench. So that's an exciting one. We have since the adoption of the pathways plan been requiring dedication of pathways or easements through private development. This is something the planning department, of course, is responsible for. We have some exciting examples of that, including, but not limited to what you saw on the bench on Victory Road earlier this year and late last year. I've got an image of that coming up, but that's a nice example of the way in which we're incorporating pathways into private development as individual developers are giving us plans for development in the city. We are, for the first time, going to have a
And Tim, I'd say too, that, you know, that's an important highlight for council since council approved this, the number of times we've seen pathways be part of that discussion um, with development. In fact, it was, we're on Tuesday. So just last night, another development and planning and zoning commission agreed to install a pathway easement along the railroad. So we're building out the network because we now have this vision that encourages others to participate in it.
That, thank you, Mayor. That's an underappreciated element of the pathways plan. The impetus that has provided to start making these connections all over the city as each individual development comes together. It's like these individual puzzle pieces coming together one by one. Uh, in addition, we'll now have, if uh, this will be coming to council, of course, in June, of course, a new modern zoning code, which includes a requirement around pathways. There's a section of this new code entitled Development and Design Standards, which includes a section on multi-use pathways, which didn't exist before. So incorporating it into our zoning code. Moving on design and implementation of the pathways plan. And then of course, our new Mobility and Public Spaces team within planning. We, Tessa is here as the leader of that group. We actually have a pathways person that will be within that team that will be starting in May. We've been working on hiring someone for some time and we've now had success finding person we think is the perfect candidate for this job and they'll be starting very soon. Regarding that program, this is uh, our team within planning to work on mobility in public spaces. And that includes most importantly, the pathways program, which has various elements to it, including uh, continuation, mostly focused on implementation of the pathways that we are currently working on, but then also expansion of the pathway system. Working with our critical partners like parks and ACHD on implementation of the program, but also really building out a community engagement program around the pathways. This should be something, as you know, that the community celebrates uh, as it does uh, the trails and the foothills. You know, this is something that is going to help strengthen our community and, and that relationship between neighborhoods and, and community groups and people throughout the city is so important. So we do think that community engagement element is going to be a big part of our work. The network vision, it really builds off the green belt as the main spine, of course. So seeking to make connections to the green belt, green belt, get people connected to the green belt throughout the city. No matter what corner of the city you live in, we've got opportunities for this. And it would, it would involve a variety of connections, you know, uh, that would involve, we've got to be creative about how we make these connections. And but the, the point is to, is to create, you know, smaller connections in neighborhoods to get people around their neighborhood. But it's also these bigger connections that are similar to the green belt in the sense that they're, they're like uh, the main, the main roads or the, the main pathways that get, get people between different parts of the city. So many opportunities for this in Boise. And with regard to implementation, prioritizing connectivity. But um, and this involves, of course, on this list here, connecting people to whether it's a public thing like a library or a park or uh, places they need to get like shopping or schools. Um, all these things, how we, how we prioritize projects that are creating that connectivity and, and safety for people outside the car and that we're doing it equitably. As I said, kind of uh, being creative about how we do these things. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the canals, which are in such an important part of this. You know how that is. We have canal company partners that we, takes time to work with. And, and these are very important parts of the system, but we've got to be open to other ways to get around. And sometimes that's parks, sometimes it's streets. All of those things need to be part of the solution and part of the network here. Uh, and then as I said, you know, this community engagement part of it is really seeking to have a whole program around celebrating each, each segment of the system as they come onboard and building momentum around the community support for this. And that includes meaningful engagement with, with everybody. Um, the neighborhood associations that we have in the city, other organizations that care about this. Individuals, um, there's such a community of people that care about this in Boise. And then we're really just focused on how do we finish projects? How do we move faster on pathways? These images here are from the, one of those Victory Road. Two of them actually, I'm sorry. You've got the rendering on top and also the kind of cross section on the bottom, which show the pathway on Victory itself on the bottom, but then also at the back of these sites, a pathway. The developers in this case really designed their new, new neighborhoods around that pathway. Really embraced the design of the pathway as integral to kind of the public realm within these neighborhoods, which is exactly what we want. We don't, you know, ideally it becomes part of the fabric of the city. It's not something that you leave in the back or, you know, buffer people from. It's actually how you design your neighborhoods. Mayor, did you have a question? Yeah.
Director Keen, can you talk to me a little bit about the plan for signage? Because oftentimes there are ways to get places that aren't on main arteries. If you have, um, if you're walking or biking, but you don't know that they're there, if you don't know that they're there. Can you talk a little bit about that? And maybe that's what this new person is going to do to let people know there's a way to get around.
Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, um, you hit on an important point here, which is kind of wayfinding or, or knowing where to go. And certainly there's a, going to be a huge effort as part of that. I think that's one of our opportunities in terms of kind of establishing the identity of these pathways in the city, which we really haven't done yet, you know? Seeking to with, yes, with our leadership now that we'll have within PDS among the things that we'll be doing. And this relates directly to community support for and the celebration that we have around these pathways is what you're speaking to, council member, you know? That people know how to get about and signage is going to be critical to that. And ideally the signage is designed as part of an overall package that helps identify pathways as such a special. You know, you think about the interstate highway system years ago, that fascinating, you know, graphic design challenge around signage as it relates to those things. It's a similar case here where we really want to brand the, in Boise, this alternative to driving the pathway system and how it connects to neighborhoods and how it gets you places you need to go. And use the signage as one of the vehicles for really identifying pathways in a substantial way. And then next steps, so we, as I said, we've got our, our pathways person beginning this month. So you'll hear a lot more from us about this. Always looking at funding and, and ways in which we can seed funding through the city to help us secure other funds, whether it's through local government partners or federal grant programs that are available. So funding will be a big part of what we're seeking to pursue in earnest. Um, coordination, I think, you know, the, this issue that, that uh, we're seeking to really bring together everybody that has a stake in this and has a role in it. City departments, of course, parks most especially, but other partner agencies. And we'll just have a much better, the much better capacity to do the coordination that's needed. That Cassia case is such a good one with Garden Street and, and then what's possible and kind of south of the park. And that's going to require a lot of coordination, which we, we know we need to do a much better job of. And we're excited to have the people that we need to do that. And also with the community outreach, this needs to become a regular part of how we talk to neighborhoods about, you know, what's possible as we're growing as a city. You know, involving people in things that they know will and, and, and will improve their neighborhood as this growth happens. This is one of those pieces. This is one of the things that, about the city's growth that people can get excited about and can improve their daily life. And that outreach is such an important part of what we need to do. So see a lot more about that this year. So that is the conclusion of my update and happy to answer questions about those things or anything else that's on your mind related to pathways.
And Mary, I figured somebody else would have a question first. Maybe one will pop up. Um, I've got some questions, I think, about community um, outreach. And I think we maybe have a good example of one of the things that were a request for reconsideration later tonight. Um, from our, our Northwest uh, Boise Neighborhood Association. When we're doing outreach, like how, how do you envision that looking? How do neighbors or neighborhoods have an opportunity to identify where a pathway is going to go, what it looks like, so that we can kind of create a little more predictability for them on when it might take place or what it might look like?
Well, I, I think the, the effort we have around neighborhoods and just community engagement in general is just going to expand in areas we can't entirely foresee right now. But what we would expect is that we are regularly engaging with neighborhoods, especially those where we've got priority pathways that we're seeking to pursue. So that we're with them constantly talking about these things. I mean, it's, it's not going to be treated like a development project that we see you once every few years about. It needs to be something that we're building a program around community engagement and people's involvement in the implementation of pathways, but also their, their kind of celebration of them. I mean, so all that we're talking about is creating this whole community engagement program that is is commensurate with the, the importance of this program to this community. And so I'm not, I'm council member Hallie Burton, I'm, I'm trying not to get too specific just because I think any, any suggestion that you have or any council member, of course, has we want to full, we want to incorporate into this, but I also don't want to limit us. We see this as a, a big effort around uh, community involvement and support for and celebration around the growing of this system.
Madam Mayor, um, Tim, thank you for the answer there. One of the things that I really liked about what you said earlier um, was sort of this envisioning process of, of what it's going to look like. Um, because I think that's sort of one of the challenges is that we are having this great success in piece by piece. Um, as a development comes in, we get a section of that pathway in. But we don't exactly know what the overall vision of that particular pathway is going to look like. So in a, in the circumstance, you know, related to the reconsideration tonight, we've got a proposal going forward and we've, we're telling them that they need to put in a pathway. But we don't necessarily know exactly what we want that pathway to look like yet in this particular neighborhood. You know, a, a nice paved pathway might work really well, or like a compacted gravel pathway. You know, the horses could ride on might also work kind of well. And so I think that that's where, you know, I'm running into a little bit of challenges with folks is that people want to know sort of like, what is this pathway going to look like? And in my particular neighborhood, it might look different from place to place. And you know, one of our departments that does such a great job with that, you know, is our Parks and Rec Department. I think about, you know, when Primrose Park was proposed and the meeting where we sit down and we talk about this is how much funds we've got available for this thing. So here's some of the amenities we might want to have and what do you want to see it look like? And I, I just get the feeling that people are going to be so excited when it comes to that opportunity to kind of engage in that visioning project. And I think you've got, you know, such a, a great team and, you know, a great partner at Parks to do that as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It looks like it is about it. I, I actually really appreciate the update. Look forward to meeting the, the new coordinator. Um, and you know, I, I, what I really liked seeing too was the, the overall map with the green belt in the middle. Cause it really was a vision of connecting pretty much farmlands to foothills, but ultimately to the green belt first. Um, they got this conversation going about pathways. And, and as Councilmember Willetts pointed out, it's not just along the canals or places through neighborhoods too. And so I appreciated the suggestion that we all look to and likely fund at some point in the future some of that activity that would make it possible to give these pathways and identifying mark that the community would start to know, embrace and look for. So great suggestion and suggestion and conversation there, council member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we are ahead of schedule. We will move into the float and safety plan. There's been quite a bit of collaboration between the county um, Parks Department and our Parks Department on this. Um, and just while they're setting up, I will continue to urge the public to please stay off the river and away from the river. Just last week I was walking along the greenbelt and saw several toddlers that were, you know, just dipping their toes into a shallow part of the river, but it doesn't matter if it's shallow, like something can happen unexpectedly, just with a little tumble. And so urge the, our residents to back away from the river. Enjoy it for the beauty that it's showing in its power right now, but know that that power is really dangerous.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's exactly how I was going to start this presentation because and it's the perfect intro because you're going to see a lot of beautiful pictures of people floating the Boise River, the branding we've put together for this really new campaign that we've created over the last nine months. And uh, my name is Bonnie Shelton. I'm the Communications and Marketing Superintendent for Boise Parks and Recreation. And I stand here representing a much larger group of stakeholders and partners who have been working on this. As I said, really for nine months, um, I know some of you are probably very excited to see this update because there's been a lot of discussions happening, especially after the season that we had last year. It was so busy. So today we're going to give you an overview of what we've put together, the new website and tools that have been created. And then um, Boise Fire is going to give an update on current conditions and kind of the outlook that we're um, thinking we're going to see for the rest of this year. So to start, just to give you a little bit of background, I mentioned I represent a much larger team. The main lead agencies that are a part of this float the Boise River kind of activity is Ada County Parks and Waterways. And I know Scott Coburg is here, the Director of Ada County Parks and Waterways. They've been a great partner. And to be honest, we've been working together for many years. But this is really the first time that we've taken all of the different agencies' information, the parts that they manage and put them into one single resource place where people can go regardless of what information they're looking for. Just really looking at it from a resident and user perspective to make it easy for them to find official information and safety information about floating the Boise River. So Ada County Parks and Waterways oversees Barbara Park, the put-in and the rental and shuttle services. Boise Parks and Recreation, we oversee the takeout in Ann Morrison Park. And then our community forestry, forestry team, excuse me, works in concert with Boise Fire to do the mitigation of the river. They sweep the river before the official float season. And then Boise Fire, as you know, is the public safety element. The dive team is on the river doing rescues whenever they get a call for service. And we have representatives, Chief Niemeyer and his team are here today. And then Director Holloway as well. We've all kind of been talking, putting these things together and coming up with what you see in that description at the bottom of this slide. Um, if you're familiar with the Ridge to Rivers partnership, I also oversee communications for that. A lot of this is modeled the same way that we found success with Ridge to Rivers. It's a multi-agency partnership overseeing a recreation activity that everyone enjoys. And so you'll see a lot mimicked in what we're proposing for kind of this new outreach campaign for float the Boise River as well. And then you see the new logo there, float the Boise. We worked with community engagement. All of this work was done in-house, by the way, with the talent and expertise that we have here at the city and at the county, which I think is really cool and just shows um, kind of the power that we have when we all come together. It's consistent. It's colorful, eye-catching, recognizable. And again, we wanted the public to see this and know this is official information coming from these entities about floating the Boise River. So we're going to dive in. We have a brand new website. It's live now. It's called floattheboise.org. And there is a story map that I want to demo for you. And Chloe Salabanks is my right-hand woman. She shepherded this through while I was on maternity leave. And I got to come back and just kind of put a bow on everything and show it to you today. And I hope I've embarrassed her as much as I was intending to. Um, so this is the new website. I have to give Joanna Zible, who is an analyst. She's a rock star with Boise Fire. And Chief Niemeyer just said, go. And she built this entire platform that you are about to see. You'll notice we have all of the dangerous river condition information. We can update this at a moment's notice. So when that was put into effect, we put all of these banners on, we updated the information on the page. And our goal was really to create one source, a one-stop shop where people can go and get all the information they may need, rather than having to go to Ada County's website for shuttle information. Parks and Recreation for the takeout, just sending them to different agencies. Now it's all in one place, coordinated, good to go. So we're going to take a look at the interactive map. And if you're familiar with the Ridge to Rivers interactive map, this works very similarly. So you can go down the Boise River from Barber Park to Ann Morrison. And you can click on the different hazards, the known hazards that are in the river. It also shows bridges. It shows the diversion dams or rapids that you will encounter when you're floating. So that really you can be prepared for what you're going to encounter, rather than just blowing up your unicorn or donut or whatever it is that we see people floating with that we really try to discourage. We want people to understand this is a wild scenic river. that you will be encountering unknown hazards potentially while you're out there. So preparing them with all that information, you can read information from our dive team on how to, you know, get to that diversion dam and float it successfully. They've really done a great job of putting all of their expertise and knowledge into this one tool. And we can, as I mentioned, update this in the moment. So this summer, if they find something new, the dive team has access and can literally be on the banks, adding something to this map. It comes to the communications team and we can share that information with the public. So it's really iterative. It's a super cool technology that we were already using in the city that now we've applied to floating the Boise River. And then the guided tour is the other thing that I wanted to point out. This is just a little bit different in that it's scrollable, so you can basically float the river on your phone and see all of the different hazards that you will encounter. We still have a couple of photos to put up. We'll have to do that when the river goes down and flow a little bit, but just another way that we can visually show people, hey, here's what you're going to encounter. This is why you need to wear good shoes. This is why we recommend a life jacket, even if you're over 14 years old. Just something that people can get that visual connection to what they're about to experience. And I think for visitors coming to the city who have never seen our river before, but want to take part in this summer tradition, this is a really great way to kind of get their feet wet, if you will. There's just so many boating and floating puns that come along with this presentation. So I apologize. Just kind of comes out. Um, and then I'd encourage you, this website, as I mentioned, is live now, so please go and explore. We're going to be slowly rolling it out to the community, obviously with the caveat that the river is not safe for floating really at any time, but especially right now. It's something that you need to take very seriously. We've put current condition information because we get the question a lot, well, what is it at right now? And how does that compare to normal flows? So we've made that very obvious. We're clearly well above what normal flows would be considered before the river, river would open for floating. And then safety checklist, parking and rentals, all that good stuff.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things that we, thank you. Yeah, this looks great. And I love the logo. One of the things that we talked about with the county is some sort of live parking metric, particularly at Barber Park, because we know that there's overflow there. It can get really new. It can become a nuisance for the neighbors and, you know, kind of like what we do at the airport. Is that going to have the opportunity to be on the parking rental site?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Willetts, that is definitely something that we're looking into. I think the good news is we have this platform now.
Yeah.
And now it's just a matter of creating what will be the most useful for the community. And I think with the communications channels that we have now, it'll be super easy for us to communicate with the county when they're seeing Barber Park fill up. We can quickly update the website. We can update our social media channels, which I'll talk to you about in a little bit. And then that way we can start getting the message out much quicker, much more efficiently. And I think that would be a great add, maybe in phase two of this website as we continue to build it out.
Yeah. Follow up, Madam Mayor, when do you foresee that phase two will be in the works?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I think we're going to try to bite off just as much as we can for this first season. And then we're going to be meeting weekly during the season, talking about things that we can improve. I would think maybe my goal, and I'd have to talk with the team, would be, maybe that would be something that we do next year and have available just as we look at some different technologies, but because the airport's already doing it, I can talk to my counterparts there and see how that all works.
Yeah, thank you. I think it'd be a good way to help the neighbors by just educating people on what the parking situation is like.
Yep, totally agree. And then this was just to hit home that we designed this website with mobile compatibility in mind. We know that most people are going to be accessing this while they're in line to rent their raft or while they're on the shuttle bus. And so it is a really great experience and we've made sure that there's not too much text that you can scroll through and everything loads and it looks really nice. So Joanna, she's the best. Um, and then communications tools and channels. So obviously we've seen the main website. We are also putting together a coordinated social media plan because we think a lot of the people that we're trying to get the safety information to are the ones using Instagram especially. So we've created a new Instagram that will go hand in hand with the Float the Boise River Facebook page that Ada County has already had success with. We'll be sharing communication across those two channels that is very similar. We'll be in coordination throughout the year. So that is live now as well, and we'll be encouraging people to follow that for more information. And we'll be putting it together a lot, like if you've seen how we do the Boise Whitewater Park. Just giving updates across both channels. So whether you follow us on each, you're still getting the same official information. And it's such a visual medium, I think it'll do really well with the public and we can have them share photos and images with us when they're in that fun portion of the season that we can use, because this is such a popular pastime here in Boise. We want people to have fun as well and be safe. And then the media is a big partner in this. We share a lot of information with them and hope that they then share it with their audiences. So news releases, regular interview availability, especially ahead of the weekend. We know that a lot of times this is something that they cover on those, maybe what are considered off days, but trying to make it easier for them to connect with us and get the most up-to-date information. PSAs and safety reminders, Boise Fire and our public safety team has a great video team as well. So we'll work with them to just keep adding to our resources over the summer. And then you'll see some examples in a minute, but park signage with website URL and QR codes. COVID made QR codes so popular. We're going to try to capitalize on that and get people where they are in both parks. And then we're also going to be adding a hazard photo gallery and in river videos, as I mentioned throughout the season, just to continue that visual representation of what people will encounter. And these are the signs that we put together so far. On the left, you'll see a magnet that will go on the shuttle buses. So hopefully we can capture people while they're on their ride from Ann Morrison to Barber Park to float, or maybe afterwards they want to check out, what was that that I encountered or how can I avoid that next time? And then the know before you go messaging is really the signage that will be in Barber Park and at Ann Morrison, just trying to get people before they hit the river, just so they have some knowledge about what they're going to encounter. And then lead up to opening day and in-season updates. I swear every May, we get questions, when is the river opening? When can I float? It is like clockwork. Um, and so we really want to take this opportunity to capitalize on that interest to get these new tools out to the community. And then start reminding them about how they can prepare to have a safe, fun float on the Boise River. So we will be working with our partners throughout this group just to continue a slow and steady roll until we do get to the point where it is, you know, a possibility that the river's float season will start. And we'll do a coordinated announcement about that and really work to get the community prepared. And then consistent web and social media updates, as I mentioned, we're going to be highly coordinated. And then if you've seen our Ridge to Rivers muddy trail reports that we started doing, this was a targeted way to just try and get people right before a weekend or a time when we really are anticipating bad conditions that could deteriorate quickly. We would put together just a quick report that had some pictures, maybe video, send it to our media partners, post it on our website. And it's been very successful in helping spread the message about how people can use the trails responsibly. And we feel like that's a really good fit for the information we're going to be sharing here about the river. So we'll continue with that. And then I did just want to mention, we're coordinating with additional stakeholders as well. So ITD is a big partner in this. Boise Fire would really love to get some additional wayfinding signs on those bridges where they had a majority of rescue calls last year. Broadway Bridge is one of those. So we've been trying to see how we could potentially make that happen. There's a lot more that goes into putting a sign on a bridge than I ever knew. But we have a design and we have legal who's weighing in on some of those things that we've been putting together and we really hope we can get that done before the float season or during the float season this year, if possible. And with that, I'll stand for any questions on those pieces before I bring up Division Chief Paul Roberts to talk to you about what we're seeing now.
Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to commend everyone. Thank you for coming and thank you. I mean, Scott has been involved this whole time. I remember these very early meetings that we had with Ada County and Councilmember Bajent, and we're all in this room talking through parking issues in Barber Valley. And, um, just to see how far this collaboration has come is really cool. Um, I think it's going to be a wonderful tool for our residents. It's going to make it so that people can still have fun on the river in a way that's more safe. I was dismayed to see that there were paddleboarders on the river without life jackets on, because every paddleboarder should be wearing a life jacket on the river, so dangerous. But, um, this will be a really great tool for us. Um, I hope that it results in a safer float season for everyone, because it is one of the things that we all love most about living in Boise is having an accessible river and having that recreation. So, um, I just want to give my kudos. Well done. Um, I hope everyone follows you on social media and gets all these great updates. And thanks to our media partners for helping us get the word out.
Madam Mayor. I don't have a question either. I just wanted to commend you for the work that's on here and the collaboration. I think the Ridge to Rivers is such a great source of information that I use very frequently. And so I love that this is a similar type resource that we can use for the, for the Boise River. And I, I love the, the logos and the development of all that. I think that's great for, you know, just being able to catch the attention of our community and to hopefully both elevate the safety issues, but also really kind of highlight this really important aspect of kind of getting, getting into, into Boise during this season. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
Ben Mary. Job well done. This is awesome to see. It's great to see everybody coming together. I remember those conversations as well. I think Councilmember Bajent maybe made the, the motion of like, yes, council direction is for you three to combine and start working together and figuring out more of a, a joint way to do this. And it makes a lot of sense. Um, I just became your fourth follower on Instagram. And I remember.
I thought we had more than that.
I think, I think I'm just your fourth at this point. Um, but we'll, maybe there's more already. I do remember in that meeting, thank you. One of the things that we talked about, uh, or I talked about and joked about was no more unicorns on the river. And.
The floating unicorns?
Yes. Yeah, the floating, the inflatable unicorns on the river. And somebody published it. It wasn't Boise Dev. Um, and I got a bunch of pushback on Instagram about banning unicorn floats from the river. But it is a concern, you know, that I know that we expressed. I'm wondering if there's anything else that we have talked about. I'm sure we can use some of these different outreach tools about what's proper and what's not proper to be used for floating down the river.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council Pro Tem Hallie Burton completely agree. It's fun to joke about it. And obviously you see that a ton once the float season opens. And I don't think we'll ever curb that completely. But I do think we can make some videos and really show the public why that is not a safe choice. It just makes paddling difficult, trying to hit some of those currents that you need to hit to stay out of the trees. I think that's where I'll lean on our Boise Fire experts to help with a lot of the PSAs and things that we can put together using these channels that I think we can eventually get some more buy-in on why that's just not the best route and not the safest route on the river. So I hear you and I completely agree.
Yeah. And Madam Mayor, just to follow up there, uh, I'm concerned about the danger. I'm also concerned about how full that trailer full of plastic is at the end of every single floating day. And so any sort of awareness, I think that we can do there about the amount of stuff that we're adding to the landfill and the bottom of the river on a daily floating base by some of just the, you know, absolute garbage that people are being sold to float down the river with. So that, that awareness is great. But again, I don't want to end on a negative note. This really is super cool. I'm sure you're going to get tons of Instagram followers. Um, the logo is great and it's a really great partnership to see.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tem Hallie Burton. I also wanted to mention that, um, we are working on increasing the amount of life jackets that are available to people. So there have been stations added at Barber Park. There'll be a station at Ann Morrison where you can drop it off. And we're just going to try to tie that all into our messaging as well to increase safety. And I'm glad you guys like the logo because honestly, we don't want to take the fun out of it. It is a fun, great experience that creates a lot of memories. So we could, we wanted something you could put on a water bottle, but that also would be eye-catching for people and they'll know this is the official source of information. So that's great to hear. Thank you.
It'd be much more fun if there was a little unicorn. Well, yeah, on, on the water.
I'll make a special one for you guys.
The, I, I just had one question. You might have covered this. I mean, I'm not a web person, but when I think about where to get information, when I go outside, I think Ridge to Rivers. So like people that have been here forever with Ridge to Rivers might Google Ridge to Rivers for this. Will there be kind of cross-linking and branding? Like if I go to Ridge to Rivers, can I see a place to click Float the River?
Madam Mayor, that's a great idea. We definitely can. I think that's the great part about owning all of these resources is we can cross-promote. And then the reason we chose floattheboise.org is we wanted that Google Analytics and SEO, because that's exactly what people are going to search. And we want ours to be the first thing that they see, since there are so many groups and blogs and people who are putting out information, but not from an official source. So definitely we will look to those partnerships because people know the Ridge to Rivers brand, know it's reliable information. It just makes sense to have this be another offshoot of that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, my name is Paul Robertson, the Division Chief of Special Operations for Boise Fire Department. And I'll cover this single slide with you all. First and foremost, I've been doing this for a while and kudos to Courtney Washborn, Steve Rutherford, who kicked a lot of this meeting off with Scott Coburg and, uh, others at the table, stakeholders that, uh, put the momentum behind this to do a lot of work. And some of those people have already been mentioned and I appreciate your recognition of the hard work. Uh, there's been a tremendous amount of effort put into making this float season a safer float season as we approach it. Ironically, that we happen to be at a flood stage or near a flood stage at the moment. Currently, the river's flowing just around 6,000 CFS and that water remains very fast. It's very cold. There's a lot of debris in there. There's a lot of unseen strainers. So, uh, that provoked the Dangerous River Condition posting on or about April 28th.
Somebody asked me last week what the temperature is. Do you know what the?
The water temperature? It's roughly in the 40s. So given a, a cold water temperature like that, even a very qualified professional swimmer can get in trouble very quickly, uh, losing their mobility, mobility and dexterity. So, um, that's a cautionary in, in itself and that the water is so cold. Uh, as I mentioned, there's a lot of debris that's unseen, strainers that are unseen. So again, that reinforces the Dangerous River Condition that we posted.
I'm just going to ask, um, strainers in regular people talk?
Yes, strainers would be, uh, much like a screen that's underwater. Water passes through it, but things, people, objects don't. And so if people get swept underwater and there's a strainer underwater or even above water, they get caught up in that because they can't pass through. So that would be the term strainer, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, the official announcement of float season will come, as Bonnie mentioned, as a coordinated effort. And a lot of that comes from Scott Coburg and, uh, the rental uh, opportunities that they have up there and when it's the appropriate time to execute, uh, uh, the opening. But again, we'll reinforce or I'll reinforce that, as we all know, the river is at a very dangerous state uh, at 6,000 CFS. We're about 1,000 below, uh, the 7,000 flood stage level. And it is not an ideal condition. It's not ideal because of, again, the water moving fast, cold debris. Uh, the banks are unstable, uh, with some of the flooding that's going on, uh, as well as access for the fire department to get in and out of there in a timely manner is complicated as well. So, uh, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor. Just for educational purposes, what is the appropriate kind of rate or temperature that you're really looking for that ideal for us to make these type of decisions?
Councilwoman, the, the river always remains cold. So it's always a cold body of water, uh, because of that water coming out of Lucky Peak and at the lower levels of that, uh, reservoir. Uh, but we really look for water levels, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500, ideally 1,200 CFS and below. And Scott Coburg takes those into account. So we start hitting that 1,500 CFS. We really start talking about uh, a communication plan about opening the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? That's the last slide? All righty.
Madam Mayor. Great job, everyone. Um, I am hoping that we have a much safer season than we had last year. I know that last year we had quite a few dangerous situations, um, and a lot of police or a lot of fire response time spent on the river um, at a great cost to both, you know, our budget and also your safety. So, um, let's, let's hope for a better year this year.
All right. Um, with that, we don't have exact. So we will recess until six o'clock. Thanks, everybody.